Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in Israel with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 27th meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Second.
There's a motion at a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our student rep update. Is Vicki joining us?
No, she's... Victoria's not able to join us tonight, but I have her report, and I'd be happy to share it with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
Homecoming is quickly approaching for students. They have a big spirit week coming up, the week of October 17th, followed by the homecoming dance on Saturday, October 22nd. Each day, they'll have different themes, ending with an annual dance that is hosted by the class of 2023. Teams have been doing well the past few weeks. The boys soccer team and golf team both earned a couple of wins last week, and the football team earned their first win against Keefe Tech. College application deadlines are approaching quickly for seniors. Guidance has started the one-to-one meetings with seniors to help the process and any questions that they may have. There was a college fair last Wednesday, and they had numerous college booths and military booths as well. There's also a financial meeting for students and parents on October 20th. And that concludes Victoria's report.
Thank you. Any questions about the student update? No? Well, thank you, Dr. Gogan, for those updates.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening again.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Very good.
Good. Nice to see you all. I'll start with my personnel update. We've hired Matthew Aronian as the interim dean at Park Avenue. We've hired Melissa Doobie as a paraprofessional at Park Avenue. We've received the resignations from Jessica Hamilton, a building float sub at Park Avenue, and Allison Rosina, an ABA at Park Avenue. In your packet at the request, the list of vacant positions is listed by school for you. These positions are posted on School Spring and frequently reposted. I know some of our administrators are in the process of interviewing for some of them, but I think the fact of the matter is that there still is a staffing shortage across the state in the field of education. Maybe not in other fields, but we certainly are feeling that. And making do with some of our staff. As you'll see when you look at the list, we have had to pull some of our academic interventionists to fill either long-term subpositions or positions for compliance reasons. So, we're doing the best that we can with the staff that we have, and I do want to give a shout out to our staff for always being flexible and willing to do what they need to do on behalf of our students. Any questions before I move on to the other updates on personnel?
I can...
Go ahead.
Through the chair. I do, because it was brought up to me at Park Ave open house about the academic interventionists at Park Ave. They're... I'm asking clarification that a lot of them are being used for teachers now?
Some of them are, yes.
So, then there's a shortage of interventionists?
There is. And so, for compliance reasons, we need to pull our certified teachers where we have open gaps in special education. And if there isn't any long-term sub, our preference is to put a certified teacher in a classroom, and that's what we've had to do. We're hoping that they can move back to their academic intervention positions as soon as we are filling those positions, and in fact, that is happening. We're... I can give you an example. We have recently hired a kindergarten special education teacher, and the academic interventionist who was filling in for that position is going back into the academic interventionist world when that person starts, which should be this week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Gogan, yeah, I actually was on School Spring today. There's over 14,000 positions in Massachusetts that are posted right now. And that's not just teachers, but that's just overall vacancies across all the schools in Massachusetts. But I am curious, so if we have an academic interventionist, for example, that's providing coverage in a classroom, who's doing the academic intervention?
Well, there still are some standing academic interventionists at Park Avenue School. So, they're separating kids into groups, and they're not able to meet all of the students that they would. And we've even talked about maybe refocusing our Title I supports to after-school, because we... Again, the certified areas where we need teachers, like special education and in the classroom, have to come before Title I. Otherwise, we'd have a substitute teacher in a classroom trying to teach for a long-term period who isn't a certified teacher. So, we'd be, in essence, maybe creating more gaps, and we don't want to do that either. So, it isn't a place where we want to be by any means, but I do think that we are handling it to the best of our ability, filling those areas like special education and classroom teachers first, with the hopes of hiring, and that's happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Under instructional leadership update, I do want to let you know that some exciting things are happening over at Bartlett. At the Summer Institute for Superintendents, I learned about a STEP program where students can start their own business. So, we purchased a printer that prints really cool signs. They're actually... Some of them are hanging in my office. And we did our first training with the adults for the Echo printer, and there will be future trainings for the students in the life skills classrooms to start their own business, where they will be printing up posters that could be used for a number of reasons across the schools, whether that's Student of the Month, or advertising, or even expanding to the community. So, we're kind of excited about that. In terms of other academics, we have had several meetings in terms of our GLEAM ELA focus. Again, that's a grant that we received. We're in our second year of that grant. We are working with TNTP through DESI instead of Hill this year for the middle and the high school. And Claire Froch and Erin Talbot will be our leads on that through TNTP. Our GLEAM leads will remain consistent from last year. They are Deb Zablocke and Jessica Barokas. Principals are putting together GLEAM teams, and I shared at the last meeting the amount of times that we'll be working with our consultants. They'll be coming to do onsite visiting, working with teachers, analyzing student work, and developing action steps for improved results in the area of ELA at the secondary levels. Again, the work for Hill is happening. The consultant from Hill is Alex Stout. She is the same consultant from last year. They are leaps and bounds ahead of the middle school and the high school in terms of their work because of the consistent partnership that they've developed. She's been working very closely with Tara Jalina. They've developed walkthrough schedules and providing teachers with feedback, so I think things are moving in a positive direction there. In terms of the TNTP Learning Accelerated Network support for math, that is just getting kicked up. Our consultant from TNTP is Leanne Davidson. She has met several times with us and the middle school and high school principals. We are going to be expanding their conversations with the academic coaches and math leads. The TNTP for math is coming on October 26th for their first initial visits, and the GLEAM first visit will be on October 27. The half-day just happened. The PD grids are in your packet to give you a glimpse of what each of the principals were doing with their staff. In terms of management and operations update, we held a district safety meeting here on October 29th, and the work that we did had to do with our emergency preparedness plans, which are submitted to the state. We went over the schools and central offices crisis plans. We are in the process, as a team, of updating the parent guardian medical and emergency response plan that we used to send out. We're looking very carefully at that. And I will say that they had an evacuation drill on October 7th for Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School that went extremely well. I want to give a shout out to our fire, police, and EMS for their amazing support with our drills. They are just like a great team to have on our side. Our safety meeting also discussed doing some ALICE drills just specifically for central office, because we're not left off the hook, and we need to do those drills just like the schools do. And we also then moved from district safety into a Bartlett High School renovation discussion with police and fire and EMS. And that was a high-level overview of the design and logistics and the introduction conversations around safety and technology and communication systems. There'll be many, 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 many more meetings with our fire, police, and EMS related to the Bartlett renovation project. I'd also like to let you know that we have moved, purchased, and updated our new website. It will take a while for that website to be uploaded. I want to give a shout out to Michelle Budney, our project manager, for curriculum and instruction and special district projects, because she's going to take the lead on transferring information and sorting that. We anticipate rolling out the new look on January... in January 2023. I would like to let you know that I have scheduled meetings for all of the staff that I supervise, and that we have come to put together a budget calendar, which Mrs. Perangeli is going to go into more detail in her report on. And under family and community engagement, I have put out several newsletters this year. My most recent was September 30th. The principals are doing a great job with their newsletters, and I want to give them a shout out for keeping ongoing communication to families. The Bartlett Beats has been going out to parents, the Wildcat Monthly Newsletter, and it is no longer called the Polar Bear Express. It is the Glacier...
Glacier's Gazette.
Glacier's Gazette. And I want to thank them for doing that. They're using some cool formats. Each school is doing a little... the smore, and they're very professional-looking. Under family and community engagement, we... I am working with Mrs. Nieves, Margarita, our bilingual family liaison, and I will be attending a Better Together Summit that DESI is putting on with a team that includes administrators and representatives from our community, parents. And this workshop is on October 28th. Kind of excited about that. Our PTO president is coming. Some of our principals are coming. Denise Inocato from North Village is coming, and another parent that I don't have the name of that has confirmed through Margarita is coming. So, that will give us another avenue of collecting different feedback in different ways on building the family partnership that we need so desperately to build with all of our students and families I continue to seek out partnerships in our community, and MahFrey has really been so very generous to us. I recently met with Linda Johnson to discuss bringing some of the things that we have done in the past back. We, of course, are maintaining one goal. We will be looking at the Early Talent Program again. As a reminder, that's a program that will help any senior go through the rigorous application process over at MahFrey and even give them a mentor at MahFrey for that process. We did have some students go through that process last year, but they never actually applied. So, we're hoping to build that program back up. We also want to bring back our Boston Children's Hospital safety programs that we have done. And we're talking about a new program that's called Look Both Ways for the High School. It's... has to do with distracted driving, and there's some pretty cool video... video, hands-on things that we can bring into the schools to do with the students. And so, I'm in the process of setting up some meetings with the principals to discuss all of that. Our Old Sturbridge Village partnership, we had our first Webster Days last year. I have a meeting scheduled with the principals of the middle school and elementary school on October 17th to plan out Webster Days for this year. I'm excited about that. Again, I had shared earlier in a previous meeting, I want to give a shout out to Webster Five for the $5,000 donation that they have given to Old Sturbridge Village on behalf of this district to ensure that Webster Days can continue. In terms of our family health and Webster partnerships, our dental program, I have some bad news. I had a meeting on October 4th with Martha Sullivan and Dr. Robert Zabowski, and unfortunately, as you may or may not have read in the Webster Times, they are undergoing some financial issues, and they will be unable to provide free dental services onsite to our students. They, like many other organizations, are facing staffing shortages, but they will continue to provide services to our families who can make it to Worcester. So, that... And our goal is to... and their goal is to maintain that relationship and hopefully get back in our schools for next year. Under other updates, I know that the PBIS teams are up and running at each of the schools, which is exciting. I know that Bartlett High School students and staff will be visiting Webster Middle School on October 14th to share about their programming and innovation pathways, and I'm very pleased that they will be getting there before Bay Path. And that's a win. And I meet monthly with... Monique and I meet monthly with the WEA. We met on October 28th. Overall, the reports were very positive about the opening of the school year and as things are progressing. It was September. It was September. Thank you. Because October 14th doesn't happen. All right.
It's Monday.
Yes, it is. And we have a cafeteria meeting on October 12th to discuss stuff with the cafeteria workers that work so hard in our district, and we're looking forward to that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Miller?
Can we clean up the incorrect... some of the incorrect dates so our minutes will be correct?
What do we have?
We got a few.
In the notes? Because the notes are not...
Yes.
Laurie will correct it in a minute.
But you announced the incorrect... like you participated in training the life skills thing on October 28th.
It's September.
That's September. I think there's another one.
Thank you.
Yeah, if it's in the... then that's just for our reference.
But it was mentioned.
Okay.
Right. The date was mentioned. That's why I'm questioning.
Yeah. I was sick last week, Linda, when I did this. So, we will fix that.
Oh. And police and fire with the renovation? I'm assuming that meeting was on October... I mean, September 29th, not October 29th.
That's probably a good assumption, too. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that for the minutes.
I think that's it, because you did correct the last one.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Gogan?
Through the chair.
Ms. Navarreta?
Dr. Gogan, I'm just wondering about your goals, and I think they'll obviously be on the next agenda. Is it possible for those to be sent to us to review ahead of time?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll thank you once again, Dr. Gogan, for your updates.
You're welcome.
And the next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item I have is building committee update. We have a building committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 18th. We will be reviewing design development submission that is scheduled to be submitted for the end of October, early November. If the committee feels that they're not ready to vote to submit it on the 18th, we will be meeting again on November 1st, as there is a lot of information to go through. The OPMs are currently working with our architects to do cost estimates. We know inflation prices have been coming in high, so, you know, they're really double-checking things and working hard. We will be meeting... I will be meeting with them on Monday, October 17th, for them to review some of the items, and that will be presented to the building committee on October 18th. So, we just wanted to give enough time for the committee to be able to digest the information, take it all in, and ask any questions that they may see that they want more information on. So, we're playing that meeting by ear, whether or not we'll need another meeting for November 1st. As Dr. Gogan said, we have continued having meetings. We met with the safety committee, just a very high overview and real introductions with all of our safety partners out there. We had communications, fire, EMS. There'll be many more meetings where they'll go into a lot more detail about what type of systems we're using, how we communicate, what are our processes, what's the security going to look like inside the building, outside the building, fire access. Did I miss anything?
No.
So, we will be... This was Jess. Hi, nice to meet you. This is where we are at the building. These are things we want you to start thinking about, so it gives them the opportunity to go back, take a look at the high-level plans, and come up with their questions and thoughts as we start to move forward down the road. So, we're working on those.
It was good to see the questions that the safety people asked and the responses from our designer were... they were on the same page in terms of safety, so I think things are going to progress very nicely with that... those meetings.
Absolutely. Any questions on the building committee items? Next item is maintenance update. I only have a few things to report on. At Park Ave, we've gotten some results back from the engineering work that was looking at the playgrounds. They came up with some recommendations to repair and fix. They are recommending on the lower playground that the drainage that is there is not enough. Currently, the water is running down, and it's running off the final edge of the playground, which is causing the ground underneath to come out, which is why we're having the dirt come out down there. So, they're recommending that we actually cut in by the edge of the basketball courts and install some drainage that'll tie in with the main road. So, that's a repair, which I will be looking at down the road. And then, they also recommend it on the upper level that we have a drain built in, but the ground is sagging by the drain. It's kind of got a hole there, and they are recommending that we cut that up and just install some screen and backfill in. They feel that the screen wasn't installed correctly at the top before we backfill. So, in our conversations, he did say this was work that the highway department is capable of doing for us. So, my next steps will be meeting with Mr. Pozetti. I know he has a very busy schedule, and he is also short-staffed. This is not something that they felt was safety at all, so he felt that it was quite safety, engineer, that we didn't need to worry about that. It could hold off until summer. So, my hope is that I can work with Mr. Pozetti if they would be willing to do the work, and I could get some pricing to see how much it's going to cost. And then, Dr. Gogan and I will have to look at some alternative funding sources for that. But that's down the road until we know how much money we're actually talking about, who's capable of doing the work. So, that's what's going on at Park Ave. Other than that, the building is running smoothly. At the middle school, we are having an issue with one of our... one or two of our rooftop units. They are kicking off, so shutting off on their own. We don't know why. We're hoping that it's not a network board, a controller board. Mr. Nice is able to go and restart it manually, goes up on the roof and reboots it, and it runs good. It's happened twice now within two months. So, they do have the HVAC specialist looking at that. We're not sure if there is a network board starting to go. So, if we do, we'll have to replace that. Those are typically, I think, they run around $2,000 per board, so we're looking into that. And then, at the high school, the only thing we've had going on here is they are repairing our generator. We had a quote for that. I think it was about $5,000 to repair the generator, and they have... they had to rebuild a motor, and they have been out here on multiple occasions trying to get that back up and running. And everything else in the building has been pretty... We did have a leak... leaks are popping up throughout the building. We did have a leak in the walls between the custodial area and the girls' bathroom, which caused us to shut the water off, but we've since... Mr. Young is very resourceful. He did himself cut a hole in the wall through the concrete bricks, which allowed the plumber to come in and patch the leak. So, I thank Mr. Young for his work. Appreciate it. He is always very willing to jump in and do whatever is needed. So, I thank him. And that is it for building maintenance. Do you have any questions in regards to that? Okay. Next item I have is the FY '22 food service financial closeout. In your packet, you should have had a copy of the final budget for FY '22. As you can see, we did end it on a good note, a very positive note. We started the year with $183,000. We ended the year with $353,000. It is recommended that we have about three months of expenditures of coverage in that account, which I would say we are getting close to that, which is the first time ever that I think we've been there. I do want to point out that that ending balance does not include May and June, so we received another $261,000 at the end of the year. That was for May and June receipts. So, if you look at the beginning in July, that $70,000, a lot of that would have been from June from the previous year. So, you take out the 70, add in the 261, you're still adding about $190,000 in revenue for that fiscal year. So, that all is in part to the additional state aid that was given for COVID, upping the reimbursements. So, the program is doing very well. They've also been really managing their food, their food waste, and being just running efficiently in the cafeteria. They're also diverting. We have federal money, commodities money that we get annually, which typically had covered round box items, or you can get meat or cheese. We divert as much of that as we can for fresh fruits and vegetables, so that way, we're maximizing how much, because that locally is very expensive, and they use fresh local vendors for that. So, that's a cost savings to us right there. We're getting a lot of our fresh fruits and veggies for free, which is fantastic. And then, we work with our other vendors for that. So, it's just doing a lot of smart shopping, I'll say, and using our resources wisely. So, I just want to give a shout out. I know Ms. Nyland's not here. She had a big part of this.
She definitely did.
In managing that, and I know Kelsey is continuing on the same path that Ellen was on, and they're just doing a fantastic job. Our ladies work hard, and we just appreciate them so much. So, thank you to the food service department. Any questions? Next item I have is capital plan. So, typically, our capital plan is submitted to the town with our budget in the end of February. Typically, you'll approve a five-year capital plan. I update it, and we send it downtown. The town is requesting that we start working on that earlier. I don't have a problem getting it done earlier. I was hoping that at the next meeting, I could present the capital plan to you. Their goal is to compile and have the information completed so they... so they can start looking at things before we actually do the budget process, if, to see if there's any kind of resources that'll cover, cover additional capital plans, because usually, we're talking about them after the fact. So, we're just starting to have those conversations a little earlier and actually have them on our radar before we get maybe any free cash in or anything like that, that we can work on these things and prioritize. So, if the committee seems inappropriate, I'd like to come with a capital plan at the next meeting and send it downtown a little earlier than normal. If that's okay?
That sounds great.
Perfect. And then, in your packet, you'll also have a copy of the FY24 Budget Calendar. This is a draft that Dr. Gogan and I worked on. They are moving targets. Sometimes, meetings get canceled. The town meeting dates and Board of Selectment dates, we're not sure of yet, but this is a guide. It's hard to believe that we're already here. We're just closing out 22. We're in 23, and now we're starting 24 discussions. So, we've got three years that we're working with, but we're, we're ready to start planning. We have new staff onboard this year at the high school and at Park Ave, so we'll get them acclimated to our budget process and start working through, start working through the budget season. And then, in other updates, the only thing I have there is I am working on the end-of-year report. I did request an extension to October 21st, and that was granted. I have all the information I need. I received the last bit on Friday, so I'm starting to put all of that together, and I don't anticipate any problems in getting it done for the 21st. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? None? We used all our questions on Dr. Gogan? She had the answers, so. The next item on the agenda is the Principal Report. Joining us this evening is Amy Puliafico from Park Ave Elementary. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll just jump right into my topics. I don't think I've been here as principal yet since the start of school, so it's been a great start to the year. Our PTO is up and running. My understanding is they became reestablished in May about of last year, so they're off to a strong start. They've had two meetings so far with a good turnout. They've been able to establish their own tax ID number now and are fully functioning, so they've had their first fundraiser event and are currently in a new one now. So, you know, it takes a lot to be able to support the, the events of a school. So, their goal is to really be able to financially support field trips for all of the grade levels. So, they're raising money with that goal in mind. And they will also be hosting a community event of Book Bingo on October 20th, so that'll be a fun night. We have completed all of our beginning-of-the-year testing, so our iReady and DIBELS assessments to give us an idea where we're starting academically with our students. We are in a slightly better place to start the year than we were last year, so that's encouraging in terms of looking at our iReady information. We are considering how to, we're heading in discussions about how to share those results with families, because we want to be mindful that without proper information, it can be misinterpreted, because looking at iReady, it is looking at what they're expected to learn over the full year. So, we want to make sure that we're communicating well about what those, what that information represents. We are in year four of our ST Math Grant, which is a pretty substantial grant that the district received in 2018. It was a three-year grant to get the program established and support implementation, and we are now in year four, so we continue to receive support from the group behind ST Math, and we are doing really well with it. We've had some great kickoffs, and the kids are really running with it. For example, last week, just in last week, the students completed almost 32,000 puzzles, so in ST Math. So, it's built right into their math, math block. They're really, we have 100% of our users logged on and currently using the program, so we are certainly making good use of that funding that we were provided. Our Guidance Counselors, sorry, one of our Guidance Counselors, Samantha Lopez Avia, along with Phys Ed teacher Leslie Peats and Grade Two teacher Kim Forgette, are running Girls on the Run, which is a program. It has 25 young ladies in it. The program is a curriculum that focuses on guiding young ladies to understand themselves, value relationships, teamwork, all while training to run a 5K. So, they're training after school to do this. They will have a fun run, the, a practice run hosted at the middle school. The PTO is, is helping them with that. That'll be on November 5th. So, they will practice their run on November 5th, and then their real run will be at Assumption College in Worcester on November 20th. So, that, that will be an exciting time. They bring a run buddy, so it can be a parent, a family member, a friend, and they run the 5K with an adult. I am not anybody's buddy on that running. I'll be there cheering them on, but the running, no. We, as Dr. Gogan mentioned, we did hire a new dean of students, so we're excited to have him start later in October. Matt Aronian is coming to us with five years of dean experience from another district. He's been in education for over 20 years, and he's also adjunct faculty at Anna Maria and American International College. So, we're really excited to have him onboard, complete our team, and keep moving forward. And finally, a Professional Day update. We had our half-day Professional Day on October 20, sorry, October 7th. We had two things, two big things really happening. We had our contracted service, as Dr. Gogan mentioned, Alex Stout from Hill Literacy, working with our teachers to evaluate their DIBELS and iReady data, to plan for classroom instruction, groupings of students, really evaluate what students need. And we also had our guidance staff and BCBA doing a de-escalation workshop with our staff to help students who may be dysregulated in the moment, to help facilitate classroom community in order to build trust and relationships. So, both of those were well-attended and very useful, very timely for our staff here at the beginning of the year. And then, not on my agenda is just our open house. We had a very successful open house. A lot of families, we had over 400 families represented at our open house, which was fantastic. There was a scavenger hunt and a lot of tables set up in, in the cafeteria with various resources. The library was there greeting families. We had people there to fix eyeglasses. We offered some of our reading resources, some of our 2017 Wonders series to our families, so we had a lot of people help themselves to those. So, it was a really busy and happy event. So, any questions?
Well, just a couple of comments. I mean, I was at the open house, and it was a great night, you know? All the things that you mentioned, and then some, I think, really great energy in the building.
Yeah.
Really happy to hear that you have a dean. You, from a parent perspective, you wouldn't know that you were working short an administrator all this time, so, so great job to all of you on that.
Yeah, the staff has really been unbelievable, just stepping up and jumping in where needed, you know, even with some of our staffing shortages and some of the flexibility they've, they've needed to employ have really just been a strong team.
That's great. The Girls on the Run is very exciting. 25 girls.
It is.
Wow, yeah. Be great to hear some takeaways from the folks that are organizing this project, I guess, maybe after the November 20th run or something like that, if they're able to
Yeah, from the facilitators.
Report back out to us. Yeah, yeah, it'd be great to hear from them.
I have one question for the chair. I love the whole Girls on the Run concept. I think it's, it's great. Are, is, is there, are there any information going out so that parents can come or other kids can come and kind of cheer them on? Or, I mean, is that something that is happening? I mean, I know I would like to go to cheer them on if, if I'm around and available, so.
Yeah, so we are putting information out. I've been sharing little bits of information in our family newsletter that goes out, and I know the PTO will be advertising it as well on our Facebook page and things like that. So, we do want to get families and additional community members, especially on the November 5th day, because that day is really training for them to learn how to do this run with people around, you know, because they're used to running just on our playground with, with just their team. So, the goal of it is really to help them practice what it is to perform in front of, in front of groups. So, I will talk some more to the facilitators, as well as the PTO, about how to make sure that's being advertised as much as possible.
Thank you.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, I'm going to add to Mr. Aronian's resume. We were partners in sixth grade, so it's nice to see him come back. And probably, I don't know if you know about it, so I'm going to address Dr. Gogan and you. This, Open House was fabulous, by the way, but it was like dodging little children everywhere. I wasn't used to that. But, there are still a lot of concerns that the library is not being used. Be, when it hasn't been for so long, what was told to me is it's in disarray, total disarray. Needs to be reorganized before it's used, and no one's in there to check out books. They want it to be used, but they don't, you don't know where the books are.
There has to be a training for people, for any volunteers that want to come in to assist in the library. I have spoken to some parents to help try to get a group together for a Band-Aid approach, if you will, but in order for any volunteer to come into the library, they would have to have a training on the system to check out books. I, you know, I've been in the library. It looks neat and organized from afar, but I don't know how many books are out of place, and I also don't know how many books have been taken out prior to COVID that aren't back in. So, I think an outreach for, or an activity for each of the teachers to do is who has a book that they took out, and, and then how will we get it back in place? I know that there are several staff, Ms. Puliafico, that are trained in the system, and I can fill you in on the staff that I know, and then we could help set them up for some other training for that system so that it could be used, because if, if you were to train all of your staff at a staff meeting, teachers themselves could take their kids in and check out their own books. But, again, it's a system that has to work efficiently and effectively, and you can't do that without the training. And again, for anyone who's watching, volunteering in the library is a great way to get your foot in the door in a schools. It's a great way to see the school. It's a great way to see the kids, and I was hoping that we could get even five or six parents to start a club and rotate days or hours or set, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole day that they would be willing to come in. So.
Those books have to be organized, though, and that takes somebody who knows something about a library. Maybe it could be a retired.
Ms. Millet!
Librarian.
Ms. Millet! Are you looking to volunteer?
That's a whole other certification. Library certification is
You could start the Band-Aid.
Retired.
Start the retired club. One day a week, a couple hours, two hours from each retired person that just left the system in the last five years.
And we have to be careful, because the other comment was that library is now, there's people sneaking in there to do what they used to do and have classes in there or meet with students.
So, I can clarify that the space is being used to meet with students. It's because we are at a, at a premium. We, we are space-wise very tight, and so we have groups, whether they are groups that get special services that need a space to meet, that just don't have it. So, we have this beautiful, large space that is unfortunately not in a, in a position to be used quite yet, until, as you mentioned, the books are organized and, and neatened up, and we have somebody to oversee. So, in the meantime, the teachers that, that are desperately looking for a spot to work with a small group of kids are using the spaces in there. We do not have classrooms set up in there. We do have, like I said, some, some spaces that teachers are using, but it is a, a chicken-and-egg situation where we need to get the library organized in order to get people in there to use it, in order to get it organized. So, in the same way that we're struggling to find staff to work for us, it's hard to find people to have time to come in and, and do that work. I do have a couple ideas about working with the high school to, to help get that done as well. So, I've been reaching out in that way as well, thinking our hours are different. We're still there for a little while, so. Couple ways that I'm trying to work on making the library functional and useful for all of our needs within the building, and, and we have, we have needs.
That's a very good idea, because the students need community service hours. That would be very good. Thank you.
As you can see, Ms. Puliafico, there's a lot of excitement around the Park Ave Library.
Well, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful space, and it's, it is a great resource to have for not only the kids and the teachers, but the community, so.
Agreed.
Be great to get it up and, up and running as a true library.
For sure. I know, I mean, having students help, students from the high school, I think, is a great idea. I also know we have Future Teachers of America. I don't know if that's something that we could also leverage and train a couple of students in, you know, whatever the system is in the library, and they could be there for a period of time. Or, even if there's a weekend day, I'd be willing to volunteer a Saturday and go in and, and help with somebody who knows what they're doing and start getting things organized. I know it's not a, a small task to be done, but I think there's definitely people in the community that'd be willing to come out and give up a day or two, get it going. In the meantime, if we could get books on a cart, I know that's something we talked about last year, some way to get books into the hands of kids. There's so many books there, just waiting to be read.
Well, and then, so if we take them off the, off the shelf to put them in a cart, we also have to get them back on the shelf in the right spot. So, it's, it's still a matter of who, who is, is able to do that.
Yep. Yeah, and I do wonder about how that would work if we had teachers bringing kids into the library. It seems like, I wonder when and how that would work, I guess. And I'm very excited to get the library up and going, but I wonder if that's a big ask for them.
I think that they would be equally excited about getting books in the hands of kids. I know they have their classroom libraries as well. I, I don't think the system's that complicated to check a book out, and I think it promotes independence if students are looking for books by themselves.
Yeah.
And they're going to their interests, and it's not a prescribed book that they have to read in their curriculum. I think that's what we really want to promote, the love of reading, and the love of reading starts with your interests, and everybody's interest is different. So, I, I think our, our students are well-behaved, and I know our teachers are able to contain their classroom. If there was 50 kids, it would be a different story, but most classroom sizes are 20, 21, or less.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can find some really good ways to make the library functioning for, for our teachers and kids. It's just a matter of getting it into a state of being able to do that first.
We were whispering here about Future Teachers of America as well, and I do think that we could probably come up with some funding. that we could probably come up with some funding for transportation for the Future Teachers of America. And I think tomorrow will be a good conversation with Mr. Collins, and I think that would be a wonderful experience for kids, again, like a mini internship. You don't have to go into a classroom at the middle school. You could go into a classroom at the elementary school or the library and help out. So I think that's another solution. All good thinking. Thank you.
It's going to take all of us.
Is the middle school library, do the students have access to that?
I think it's, I think all of our libraries are, do not have librarians at this current moment in time.
Because my understanding is, at the middle school level and high school level, you have to have a certified librarian in there. Elementary, you do not.
In the budget, the Webster Middle School put in a paraprofessional that was not teaching for the Webster Middle School Library. They have yet to be able to hire someone to do that. Again, it's, even at the high school, you're supposed to have a certified librarian for Nezdek, for, Neask, I'm sorry. But to find the people, I think, is our issue, is to find the staffing. And again, these are great ideas about, I really like the students, because I think that's a viable option. I think we're hitting a brick with hiring staff, whether they're certified, uncertified. You know, five years ago, we used to have a tax write-off in Webster, and we had a volunteer come into the library and work in the library. But I think Webster did away with the tax write-off for people in the community. So they were coming in to get their hours checked off. So I don't think they have that anymore. So all of these ideas are great. I think we should look at all those avenues, because we all want kids to love reading, all kids.
I don't think it would hurt to contact the director of our town library, too, to see if they have any ideas about what could be done. They might have some avenues to, for people, or even help.
I think we should start a new club, Lynda. I really do. It's not the Breakfast Club, but it could be the Retirees Clubs. We'll make T-shirts for you. If you could contact everyone, they'll do it.
Sounds like a challenge.
It would also be neat, now I'm dreaming, right? But it would also be neat to have some kind of a book club that involves parents in the community. I know that that library is geared toward children, but we could even use that venue as an avenue to bring families in, and whether it's reading an adult book and talking about it or something, it brings parents into the building and, you know, you can begin making some of those connections as well. It's just another way we can use that room, I guess. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Pulioffico. Nice to see you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your updates. Lots of exciting things going on at Park Ave. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is the monthly fundraising update. And just as a reminder, it is the role of the school committee to review fundraising activities, but we do not approve them. I see in our packet there is, let's see, are there some fundraising applications? I'm just trying to open it.
I got it, if you want me to.
Sure.
The DECA Club is going to be selling T-shirts. They'll be selling them in-school only to faculty and staff. The class of 2023 will be selling butter braids. The class of 2023 will be selling tickets to the Homecoming Dance. And the Webster Middle School PBIS Committee will be delivering letters, staff only, will be delivering letters to local businesses, asking them to help support the PBIS program by providing items for raffle baskets, the school store, and monetary donations.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda under New Business is the approval of the 2022 to 2023 District Strategic Plan.
So this plan is a little different than what you're typically used to seeing. We used to call our plan instructional strategies, specifically because the Webster Middle School is a low-performing district. And so we really focused on curriculum, improving professional development, and over the last five years, we have upgraded all of our curriculum and provided ongoing professional development. So this plan in front of you is a little bit more detailed in terms of the four buckets that I keep talking about. It is, our mission is the same, our vision is the same, our beliefs are the same. What we want to have from this plan is a overarching message that each school can take and then build into their school improvement plans. Our instructional priority is to create a sense of belonging and engage all students through on- or grade, above-grade-level learning experiences where the students are doing the majority of the thinking and have access to as-needed scaffolds to support their success. I want to just pause here, because this is a mouthful. But what it really means is that we need to make sure that students are engaged in the classrooms. If they're not absorbing the information and making it their own, they're not going to build their skills. So we're building things from the classroom out and really focusing, and we always have been, but we're using language in a different way to bring people together so that it's cleaner, clearer, and very concise. Under this large umbrella of an instructional priority of having students doing the majority of the thinking, this also aligns with what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wants us, particular Webster Middle School and Webster High School, to do for their tag grants. And their tag grants are associated with them being low-performing and focusing on Tier One instruction. The four buckets are simply safe learning environments. It's much more detailed in this report. The second bucket is having the students doing the majority of the thinking and having supports when they need them, not over-scaffold, not task-oriented work, but hands-on learning that kids are really, truly excited and engaged in. The third bucket is really that celebration of diversity and making sure that all of our practices, that things that we might do that we wouldn't even think of the word equity, that they are culturally responsive and all students have access to them. And it's amazing when you change your lens, your glasses, and you start to look at things with that equity lens on how you may think that you're doing something, and it's been working all these years, but then when you start to tear it apart, you realize that you're dismissing a whole bunch of kids by preconceived judgments on what they can and they can't do. So we really want everyone to sort of look at that. The fourth thing is the importance of that family partnership, that two-way, ongoing communication. There is no way that families should wait till the end of a semester to realize that their students aren't doing their work. That two-way communication should be ongoing and consistent for all families. And that families have a right, a right, to receive information in their native language when they need it. So those four buckets, I'm trying to simplify with action steps. And again, these action steps were devised by the district leadership team and as a result of collecting some feedback from families, not that many families participated. And these are the district-wide action steps that we will be taking, we are taking. Each principal has taken these buckets and taken a look at their school improvement plans, which they're working on with their staff. Some of our half-days have been spent and time with ILTs. The principals have been spent with, looking at these four buckets to dig deeper at, to the school level on how does this relate to us and what are we going to do differently to reach different goals? So they're going to be coming up with goals underneath this in their school improvement plans. I won't read all of the initiatives, but the documents, if you go to the last page, sort of a backwards by design, and you break down all of the four buckets, this is what we hope is going to happen. When we create safe learning environments in all classrooms and all schools have clear and consistent expectations and systems of support that foster student learning, we anticipate that discipline incidents will decrease. We anticipate that attendance rates will increase. We anticipate that graduation rates will increase and dropout rates will decrease, and student achievement rates will improve, and the culture and climate will improve. So by the year-end, we hope that 85% of our students will show an increase in their sense of belonging as measured by school culture and climate surveys administered at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And then, in addition, that 100% of our students will be able to identify at least one trusted adult within their respective schools by the end of the year. We hope that is already have happened now. Under, students will be doing the majority of the thinking and have access to as-needed scaffolds to support their academic success with on- or grade-level, above-grade-level standards. We anticipate that we will decrease achievement gaps for targeted subgroups, increase student growth for all student groups. And by the end of the year, 85% of the teaching staff observed will demonstrate instruction that shows students doing the majority of thinking as measured by walkthroughs, forms used by the ILT and school-based leaders. Under celebration of diversity and equitably and culturally responsive practices, we hope that students by the end of the year, connections and learning improve because they feel valued and respected. With that comes approved attendance, achievement rates, and through a culture and climate survey, we will be looking for culturally responsive look-fours, which are specific indicators that 85% of the staff will demonstrate culturally responsive instructions, instructional practices during walkthroughs conducted by the district and school-based leaders. And then with ongoing two-way communication with all families, everyone's efforts across the district united will strengthen that family and community partnerships, and we will see more families in attendance at schools. We will see student rates, achievement rates improve, because research tells you that if parents are involved, kids value education and they participate in a different level. And we will be utilizing feedback forms from school events and family surveys that will be given. And we will also be trying to increase the amount of family events at each of the schools to at least five per year. So those are our goals, district-wide, for a strategic plan.
Other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. I have a couple of questions. In the first bucket, so we're talking about safe and supportive learning. So I'm looking at specifically 1.1, the results from the PBIS needs assessment at each school will be used to reset behavioral expectations. Has this data from each school been shared with the school committee? And I don't, I just, I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, no, this was shared with the schools and the PBIS committees. So last year, we hired May Institute, and they did a needs assessment at the end of the year with administrators and the PBIS committees to take a look at where they fell on the needs assessment. And that was a starting point for each school. So the PBIS committees at each school are taking that information. I'd be happy to share it with you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested. I'm not sure how the other members feel.
I would be interested.
Thank you. And then 1.4, the classroom and building schedules will allow for frequent grade-level student assemblies to discuss and review student behavior expectations. How, I guess, you know, assemblies would probably be well-received at the elementary level and even maybe the fifth and sixth grades, but I'm thinking in the older kids, do you have an idea of how the assemblies would look? I'm just thinking, at a high school level, they might not, it might not be received.
Yeah, they do do assemblies. So they'll do frequent assemblies. At the middle school, they call them community, Lynda, community meetings. They do community meetings, and assemblies is broad. So you could have something fun. You can have someone from the outside come in to talk to you about behavior expectations around bullying.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to pull out, yeah.
Right. So these aren't, these aren't, I think we want to get away from sitting and drilling, sitting and talking, and sitting and listening. We want them to be interactive and two-way with students as well. So that's what that, that's what that bullet is.
Can I jump in with a question about that before you move on to your next question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Gogan, I appreciate where, there's another area where there's a specific number of events that we're going to be asking schools to be holding. Can we get a little more specific on things like that objective there? Frequent grade-level student assemblies, like what would the frequency be? Is it once per quarter, twice per year? That would make it a bit more measurable.
I'd be happy to add that and bring this back next time.
Thanks. I just have one more, sorry. 3.1, in that area, I'm just looking to see if there's data around the number of students in each school that are below grade level, at grade level, and above grade level, just to kind of measure what the starting point is and grow from that.
Yes, we shared that with you last year. We, the iReady data gives you the information on, so there is a starting point. That data wasn't just taken last year, it's taken every time we use iReady. So there is a tracking mechanism to see how students grow or don't grow.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Yes, through the chair.
Ms. Millet?
I think communication with families is a lot more than just calling them. I think we need to find out what our families need to be successful, to help their students and to be comfortable coming into the schools. We need to know what they need. Sometimes it's food. Sometimes it's transportation. I know a lot of parents don't come because they don't have the transportation. These are the things we need to know. What can we do to help them be successful? Because if they're successful, they're going to feel better about it. The student's going to feel better about it. They're going to do better in school.
I agree with you. I think that we do do some outreach, Lynda, to find out what families need. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of responses to family surveys. It did help sending it through Class Dojo, and again, I believe it's personal relationships. It is sometimes having a connection at the school, so with every family, and somebody reaching out to them. That's why I'd ask all teachers at the beginning of the year to make those phone calls at the very, in the first two weeks of school, to make those initial connections with families. Much easier said at an elementary school than it is in a middle and a high school, right? But it's doable. It's doable because we have homeroom at the middle school, and we also have advisory at the high school. And so having a contact, having one contact for each family, goes along with having each student be able to recognize or say out loud who their trusted adult is. Can every parent say that here? No. The answer's no. I agree with you 100%, but finding out those specifics about each family is contingent upon having somebody build a relationship with them. And one person can't do that. That's a collective That's a collective we. That, that's everybody making the effort. That's why we're putting that in here. So it's a non-negotiable, as we move forward, that you do pick up the phone again when you don't get the answer. And it isn't just a letter home. It's making that connection with families and that's everyone's responsibility. And until we have everybody moving in that direction, I don't think we're going to make change in that area because it's a concerted effort. And, you know, I think that's where that culturally respect and culturally responsive understanding has to really come to life. Not all parents are home and not all parents speak English. So we have to get a little creative. And we have the avenue here to use the phone with a translator. We have services where people are, can be called in to meetings, but it is making those connections. So I definitely agree with you, but it's a collective we. I want to really put that out there.
Agreed. I almost wonder if it's worthwhile to have a survey where we ask families if they have a point of contact within the building that they feel that they can go to. I mean, ideally, it would be the classroom teacher or the principal or something like that, but if they don't have that level of familiarity with somebody, that's, that's a good barometer to measure the level of engagement or understanding of what's going on. And that might be something that will inform, you know, another initiative throughout the year. And also with regard to the, again, we have monthly student engagement activities will be planned by each school. And then there's something more, a number four about, was it number four? Had to do with events for families.
It was like 4.2.
4.2, I think.
Or 4.
I think it's great to plan the events. We know we had a lot of events last year. They were really not attended as well as we would have liked. Maybe building in a goal around attendance. It's going to cause us to really beat the bushes to find people to come out and really identify different ways to reach families, whether it's dojo or, you know, using the sign or the teacher calling home and saying, hey, I don't know if you know this, but we have an event coming up on Thursday. I'd love to see you there or whoever's going to be there. That creates that personal connection.
Through the chair.
Ms. Nebrad?
So I like this district strategic plan or the overview, and I do think it has more specifics than it has in the past, which is great. I'm wondering if possibly around late January or early February, after they have the mid-year iReady data, if that could be presented to us as a measurement towards these goals and also include the attendance data and the behavioral data.
Sure.
So we have that check-in at the midway point.
That's a good point, Ms. Nebrad. I had, one of my questions was about the frequency that the data would be collected and then reviewed. So I think that's, that's definitely on point. There is something in here about observations of teachers. And it says something about 85% of them, everything I'm looking for, I'm not finding as, as I'm looking for it. Thank you.
It's in the outcomes.
Oh, right, thank you. Are we quantifying the, is it every teaching staff that's observed or is it a certain percentage of the teaching staff?
Well, every teaching staff should be observed.
Maybe, maybe building that in, you know, 100% of them will be observed and 85% of them will demonstrate instruction. 85% of those observed, it could be, it could vary if not everyone is, you know, being observed. And is that, how frequently are they observed?
Depends if they're a professional status or non-professional status. So part of the teacher's negotiation included more mini walkthroughs. So the goal is to get the administrators in the classrooms much more frequently to see what's going on.
Okay. Again, that specificity of, you know, if it's quarterly or, you know, twice a year.
We monitor that. We definitely monitor evaluations. I do want to let you know that, that, you know, how they're doing. We have deadlines in the contract that have to be met.
Can we have a, even a subsection somewhere of that it's not just teachers that are in contact with the students all day long? It's our custodians and cafeteria people. And I've seen them just be so wonderful with, with children that they should be included as part of the staff, not just the classroom. It's people, first people they meet, the office people.
Yep. They are included, so they're just not explicitly pointed out. So where would you want me to put them in? I, I just want to go back to the purpose of these four buckets was to help teachers feel not so overwhelmed with multiple initiatives and to really clarify things in simple terms of what we have to do in order to be able to change the trajectory of our student achievement data, which obviously you're talking about. And in order to get to those things, we try, we're trying to simplify it. This is not excluding our custodians or excluding our cafeteria workers or excluding our secretaries in any way, shape, or form. Under the sense of belonging, our focus is we're all here for kids. Everybody is here for kids. But we wanted to put these things in four simple buckets. I'm happy to add them, but I just don't know where and what you would like me to, how you would like me to put them in there.
Well, couldn't we call it our school community?
Which, which number?
Instead of just saying in the classroom, that this is being related to our school community.
Yeah, so I, I like your thinking, Linda, but I want to be really clear that the work that we're talking about is in the classroom. The sense of culture and the community and that ongoing two-way communication and that celebration of equity and diversity, that's all of us. That's all of us. But the work that has to be done here is in the classroom. And so we took this philosophy from Desi, the sense of belonging and building things from the classroom out is really what we're trying to do. And that is everybody. I'm happy to add another bucket about everybody, but I just don't know how to, what to name that.
So instead of adding it to this bucket, because I've never seen this happen ever, can we come up with something that celebrates those non-classroom people that are involved with our children? Because they seem to, because they do do a lot.
We certainly can.
They don't just do their jobs.
We certainly can do that.
It doesn't have to be in this.
But it has to be in this.
Part of this.
Right. So this is just, again, overarching direction, a directional focus for schools to take these buckets and build their school improvements off of it. Because when we're all working in the same areas, we're going to make progress. We certainly can celebrate, and we do celebrate people here every single day, whether it's Custodians' Day. And in our theory of action, it says it right there. So, and the theory of action says if teachers, staff, students, families, and administrators, staff is there, have a shared vision, provide clear expectations, consistent feedback to students and each other's, participate in professional development and extended learning opportunities, create schedules that maximize core instruction. I think the if-then statement of the theory of the action, we can make sure we have a bullet for them. Because they certainly are part of our community.
All right. I know we've, we've provided a lot of feedback. It's, it's great that, you know, all of us take this very seriously. The final thing that I'm going to mention has to do with the transparency of instruction. And, you know, from a parent perspective, there, you know, whether it's weekly or monthly touchpoints, including, you know, what's, either what's being worked on in the classroom or what's been done over the years, it's, it's not been consistent and some do it really well. And I'm not sure what the expectations are, whether it's the same expectations within a whole building or across all three buildings. It seems gone are the days of elementary school kids coming home with a folder of everything that they did for the week with, you know, sort of a summary of the lesson to come and that type of thing. But those types of things, again, as, as somebody who tries to be pretty involved would be helpful and I think for those that may not be quite as involved, it would be very informative. I don't know how that would play out at the middle school or the high school.
I think it plays out very well. I think those, some of those old-school routines and structures are exactly what we need. Again, I think that's the purpose of something like this, is to build that cohesiveness that we're lacking because we are. And this is a starting point. Will all of this be accomplished by the end of the year with flying colors? I hope so, but it may not be. But it's now documented in a plan that we are all going to focus on in a clear and concise way. I, I agree with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, it goes beyond the posting the curriculum on the website for someone who may not be so savvy.
Those are the details that the schools can build in their school improvement plans about what the expectations are for each grade level. This is, again, overarching. The details and the work are in the schools to build the consistency and accountability. But I will go back to the district leadership team with it, with all of your feedback and put it back in here and with measurable goals. Again, this is something that we're aiming to do just for the purpose of bringing that cohesiveness to the district in these four buckets. So whatever the pleasure of the school committee is, I will take your lead.
Would the committee like to revisit the strategic plan with the feedback next time? So is that a motion to table this until next time? Pass over. Lori, help me out here. No vote? Okay. Thank you. That is it for our agenda, other than the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion at a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.